Awesome. Everybody. Oh, Holly's playing hockey.
Holly's playing hockey.
So we're just like to watch them shake their head and give us high fives. Okay, here we are, I'm calling the meeting to order, review of the library exits. Behind you, behind me, please pick the one that's the safest to get you out as quickly as you possibly can. Um, my welcome is going to be welcome to everyone and including our special guest Jessie Baker, who's going to speak to us in just a moment. And my chair remarks are going to be quick and brief. We have new agenda templates for From the City, which is why the agenda looks a little wonky. Mostly because of Spacy trying to figure out how to send these things to me, but that is perfectly okay. And I'm going to add a quick as part of my chair report to say, hooray, we have members of committees. New members that are joining committees, Whitney will be joining the comm squad at the next meeting. Yay. And Donna will be joining governance. So thank you both for stepping up and doing that. I really appreciate it and I know that everybody else does as well.
So you're appointing them?
I'm appointing you. I'm appointing you. Okay. Excellent. That was my quick, we will go back to, I had one more thing, I'm so sorry. Just that we will go back to using a consented consent agenda next month. I just have to figure out how to get it into the system the correct way. And I actually want to, wait, where did Jessie go? Thanks Jessie. I'm gonna flip this just to be confusing to put Jessie before Jennifer.
Yep, do you want to do the minutes?
Yes, that was the one thing I did miss. Can we please have a motion to approve our last month's minutes?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve last month's minutes.
You're gonna be my second?
Any discussion about the beautiful, all those in favor, please say ah. Saying those are approved. That's why I need to write a really good agenda. So we're going to switch to Jessie now. Jessie, hi, thank you for joining us. I'm actually going to close this the rest of the way.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if Ted was coming.
Oh, he's not.
Okay.
He is. So Jessie is joining us to do an overview of the parking conversations that have been going on at city council. And what that will look like for us in the future, and if there's anything that we can be doing or should be talking through. That would be amazing.
Sure. Hi.
Hi.
Uh, I do want to preface this a little bit, because it is the dudly of a week, so I apologize. Possibly, I have trouble carrying out at the end of the day. Like me, Holly, or?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It's just, okay, so it's not working.
Yeah, I'm here. That's why I was here in person today, because I can't take minutes. You may not be able to see me, but maybe you'll hear me better. That was a little better.
Thank you.
Awesome. So, um, I think this, I'm happy to have this conversation with you today and kind of and share where we are, but I think it is a bit premature if you're looking for what's going to happen. So I can tell you where we are right now and solicit any ideas and feedback you have. But I, we don't, well, let me just tell you where we are. Um, so big picture is you know, for 40 years, this community has wanted a downtown, a city center. And it is coming, it is happening all around us. We are hugely privileged that that city center is anchored by a library. I think it's a really fascinating testament to this community, but also just to what it's going to look like in the years and decades to come. That the library is kind of the public anchor of our city center. As we think about, from a community development standpoint, as we think about how we realize the vision that the community has set up for the last couple of decades. One of the things we hear very strongly, and we've, you know, had zoning code aligned to this, the developers have built to it, is to have a significant commercial base in the city center, to have a walkable, mixed-use neighborhood where people can live and shop and go out to eat and connect with their friends and go to coffee shops and be connected to parks and whatnot. So that is all happening. One of the things that we have to do in order to make the business, the commercial district, the commercial aspect of city center work is have paid parking. When you don't have paid parking, what happens is residents and employees will park the easiest way to where they're going, and they will stay there, and there will not be turnover of parking that is what creates vibrancy for businesses. So we are, so that's what we're trying to, that's the high-level goal of what we're trying to achieve, is to manage the parking in city center to support not only the public aspects of the senior center and the city clerk's office and the library and the school, but also the vibrant commercial space that is now here and opening and you know, tenants are looking at. So in order to figure out how to do that, so this is the only, I think I've said this maybe to you all before, this is the first community I've worked for. I've worked for four communities that didn't have paid parking, and it is a joy and a pleasure. But there are ways that doing paid parking well can not be as terrible as it normally is. So that's what we're trying to achieve, is to figure out a paid parking system that will work for as many folks coming to city center as possible. That includes looking, having our parking, our hope is that our parking network is not just the spaces that the city owns and controls, but is all the parking spaces in city center that we partner with the private owners to also manage and enforce and have part of the parking network. So what do I mean when I'm saying that? So if you are to look at like a Google image of city center, there's a huge amount of surface parking that is not on street, so it's not owned by us, it's owned by somebody else. But it's only, it's either underutilized or only used certain hours of the day. So we're trying to figure out like how we use each of those spaces as many hours of the day for as many public uses as possible and enforce that. So thinking about like the parking behind this residential building, how do we, you know, when the residents aren't there during the day, is that somewhere where employees could park, or is that somewhere where senior center visitors could park or things like that? In order to do that well, we need, we need monitoring systems, we need enforcement systems, we need all of those things. How we are doing, how we are assessing all of that right now is in partnership with the Regional Planning Commission and Chana County Regional Planning Commission. We have a consultant contract through them with a group called RSG, which is a technical consulting group in Vermont. They also did the analysis for the ZEMS at the school, if you were ever involved in that process. They are building a parking management plan for us that's based on actual data of the parking spaces we have available, the uses we have in city center, how used those spaces are now, and then looking at other models statewide and nationwide of how parking is managed in similarly situated communities. We are also having a series of listening sessions with key stakeholder groups to try to understand what folks want, including the school, the general public, staff, the business community, the landowners, those kinds of groups. So those are all happening in March, which is why I don't have a plan yet to release to you. We are still very much in the data collection phase. But I'm, I'm here to hear any ideas you have for what this could look like for the library. Certainly, there are urban libraries all over the country that have, that manage with parking scarcity or paid parking or no parking. And we're trying to learn from what those systems are. Jennifer and her team are doing some research on that for us, as is our consultant, to try and understand what our options may be, so we ensure as much open access to not only the library, but the senior center, the city clerk's office, our staff as much as possible. If you have ideas on what that could look like, I have all ears, but that's basically what, where we are right now. I would imagine that once we have the data and the proposed parking management plan, ultimately that will need to go to the council for them to ordain it, to set up the special fund, to figure out how we're going to staff this, and then implement it over time. I can tell you some things I think are going to result, but only if you promise not to hold me to them. Something else, a better system comes out. And that is, I don't think we are going to have parking meters in every spot. That is old technology that is kind of of the past. We want to use our space differently on the street. I think we will likely use some kind of parking app. I think we will likely use Park Mobile, because it is the same app that Burlington and UVM and Winuski have all aligned to already, so people are very used to using it. And when I was in Winuski, we had a different parking app and moved to Park Mobile so that that alignment could happen regionally, so we kind of want to support our partners in that. They also have a lot of tools that Minas Valley's can use to have free access, to have employee access, to have pass codes. So there's some technical solutions that I think may support some of what we're trying to do to keep equitable access for all in our public spaces. That was a lot of rambling. I'm gonna stop talking for a minute. Anyone want to talk about police chief? It's the right thing. What can I, what ideas do you have? What, what, what should I know?
Good question. I assume the assessment of how much parking is needed is part of what's happening? Or like, I guess, so two questions, that's one question, like, do we have enough, is the idea that we have enough parking, it's more than a meter? And the second question is, if we don't have enough parking, is there, is there a potential plan? I'm not saying like build a parking garage or anything like that, but I guess it's more of the assessment of like, is sort of what we have enough? And if we do, if not, what's the plan?
So that's part of the analysis of what is the, what is the, I'm not thinking of the word, inventory capacity of the parking we have? And then given the uses that we have now in city center and the uses we hope to have in the future in city center, does that match up and are, is it all walkable and passable? Our inventory right now says we have 10,000 parking spaces in city center. That is a lot of parking. Now, that's not necessarily all parking we have right now today access to, but our hope is in partnership with our property owners and private sector partners that we can access a lot of that. Now, what that doesn't mean is we have 10,000 parking spaces within 10 feet of the library, right? So when we think about shifting our mindset from a suburban architecture to a real downtown, where our hope is that people are either walking or biking or taking the bus to city center, or if they're parking at city center, they're coming and parking once and doing a variety of things in city center. So when you, you know, go to Church Street, you're not going to, you know, farmhouse and then getting into your car and driving to Phoenix and then getting in your car and driving to the Flynn, right? You're parking and doing a bunch of things. That's our hope for a city center too. And I think 10,000 spaces, or say only half of those become accessible to us, 5,000 spaces for the uses that we are going to have in the next decade are probably manageable, but it's going to take culture change to say, no, you don't get to park right in front of the building. And I think the challenge for me and us and our staff team is that also looks different when you're a senior going to a senior exercise class or a young family coming to the library than it does when you're a city employee who is spending eight hours a day here every day and coming in and not coming in and out. So how we manage that will also be, we have to manage the human flow of it and then the culture change of it, and then the technology solution to make all that happen.
Does the 10,000 include the mall?
Yes.
And the school?
Yes. It includes every parking spot in city center.
So go ahead and tell me if this is too premature, if we're still like, but when, have you been able to speak to private property owners and what's been their reaction, are they like eager to get started on this and hit rolling? So that's one question. My other question, it's probably been resolved, but it has been an issue for me so. Like, how does Park Mobile handle people who don't have access to a smartphone and all kind of things? And finally, and again, this is way too premature, I'm sure, but in terms of revenue, like, is your anticipation that this is going to be like, like a net gain, net zero, like, you're gonna pay for the maintenance of the, and that's it, or is there an expectation that this will that will gain money from this, the city will?
So I'm gonna go top-down on those questions. So we have met with some property owners, we certainly have not met with all of them, so I can't comprehensively speak with all of them, about all of them. It is a unique, what we are trying to do today is what cities who have had paid parking for a long time, but have only had paid parking on, on public access spaces are trying to move to, where you have more of a network of parking than just paid parking. Small tangent for a minute, sorry to go do this, but has anyone, people know where Four Quarters in Winuski is at the top of the Rotary? So if you can picture that in your, and you've driven there, there are on-street parking spaces, and then there's that parking lot at Four Quarters, and then there's the City Hall parking, right? So those are three differently managed parking lots right now. So if you pay on the street, you pay the Park Mobile fee and it's low. If you know to park at City Hall, it's free, but you can't park there overnight, and it's not really a nice thing to do sometimes. And if you park in the private lot, the lot on the Four Quarters property, it's a private lot that costs twice as much as the parking on-street lot. So that's ridiculous, right? Like, that's not customer service friendly, it's not smart. That's what we're trying to not do. We're trying to say to the Four Quarters, people, let us lease your, us as the city lease your land. We will pay, you know, we will make that money back by charging for parking on it and enforcing parking on it, but it will be part of the whole network. So if you are a member of the community, you just know to go to a parking space and do your Park Mobile thing and you're done. You're out, you don't have to remember where everything is. That's what we're trying to undo. So a lot of property owners who get that urban kind of development are totally on board. They don't want, so for example, Snyder Braverman, who own these parcels, all of the housing next door to us, they know that we moved to paid parking in the city on the street, we have a lot of activity on the street. They don't do any enforcement or payment in their lot, people are gonna park there, and they're gonna have to figure out an enforcement mechanism to get people out of it. So they don't want to stand up their own enforcement mechanism, so there's some economic sense to them to join us. Does that look a little different at the Blue Mall where you have parking inside versus outside, maybe? You know, so those are the kind of nuances we're trying to work out. So some of the, I would say, some of the property owners that we've talked to are very bought in. Some may be, need to be convinced, and some are like, we'll deal with that in the future, which may also be fine. That was your first question. Second question, people who don't have smartphones.
You can, because I won't tell you who, but someone did not want to get the Park Mobile app, so they were using their credit card to use Park Mobile.
You can. They usually have a couple of kiosks, so that you can walk to the kiosk and do it on there.
So for, so we may have kiosks, we may have a station in City Hall where you can log on to a complete, you know, a lot, an iPad at the door and do it. There are other kind of technical solutions for that. There may also be a hangtag option, you know, like we may say, for, this is hypothetical, right? These are, we are just talking ideas, do not quote me, this is what we're gonna do. But it, it's be it could be the case that people become members of the senior center, and for your membership, you get a hangtag that you can put on your mirror, and when the parking enforcement officer walks around, they know that you don't have to pay for parking. You know, there could be a solution like that, for example. So things to work out. Last, last question, and then I'm gonna tell you. So the revenue question. So are, so part of the analysis that RSG is doing for us is a financial analysis, what we will need, how much it will cost us to run the technology, to run the enforcement, those things, and then how much revenue we can expect to get based on the, the capacity and the uses. Our hope is to run this as what we call an enterprise fund, like the water fund or the wastewater fund, where the cost, the users pay the cost of the app service. That doesn't, we know nationally that that doesn't always work, much more often they are subsidized rather than revenue generating. We also know that the major revenue driver of parking systems isn't actually your Park Mobile $1.90 that you pay. It's the $25 ticket we give you when that expires. So that's also a question for our community, is what level of enforcement do we want to see? Do we want to see $50 tickets that's going to make the revenue, but piss people the hell off? Do we want to see, you know, shame on you cards? Do we want to see $10 tickets? You know, those are all things we're gonna work out over time. But our hope is that the revenue of the system will support the system, and we won't use property tax dollars for it.
College is like a shit ton of money off enforcement.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I have to say, right hearing you say that, hopefully not to use property tax makes me like that, that's an option.
Well, I mean, everything's on the table right now. I, you know, in, well, the benefit we have is our parking system will not need to maintain a parking structure. Parking structures are hugely expensive. It's about $30,000 per space in a parking structure to build and maintain it for a period of time. So the, the benefit of using surface parking, while it's a terrible use of land, is that it, we may be able to support the infrastructure with the user fee.
So. I don't remember my question then.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about smartphones and things when you
I think it was just saying other ways that like, I'm thinking of like the permission, so you sort of suggested like, maybe if you're a member of the senior center, that there would be that kind of thing. So I guess I was asking whether, my thought is, is there flexibility? Or when they recommend things, I'm hoping there would be flexibility from some of that kind of thing, like come up with, it might be funky structures, but things that allow for some people not to pay for parking, or the first 30 minutes is free, or the, you know, to purge people not to hang around too long, you know, or that goes against spending your money downtown, so, you know. But, so that's all, it's just that when they give you a recommendation, I'm assuming some of those things would be.
Yeah. And I just want to make the connection that these two ideas are in conflict with one another, right? So, so you have the, the priority of the city to have some kind of free parking content for segments of our population or times of parking, which means we're not collecting revenues, which means over time, we're gonna have to subsidize it, right? If we are making the value statement that no senior citizen should pay for parking, which I'm not saying we are, but say hypothetically we were, that means everybody else has to subsidize that activity.
Question, how do you see the school fitting, and that feels like a safety concern for the school, and there's buses coming in and out and pick up traffic? So how is that, do you think that would fit in as the plan?
So one of our primary listening sessions is with the school leadership. So we haven't had that conversation yet. And really, we will do what they want us to do. So we could enforce their law and put it into the network on non-school hours. We could gate it, so only people who had access, had permission from the school could get in. There are lots of solutions, but we, I have not determined any of those ideas until we meet with the superintendent and the principal and the leadership of the school district.
And when, do you know where that was, or how do I not know?
That hasn't, we haven't heard from them on us. Well, yeah, we haven't heard from them on us.
Those are Holly's words, just so.
Holly, so if this isn't revenue generating, we are going to make city center less, if this isn't revenue generating, we are gonna make city center less accessible to low-income residents than there is already underutilized parking. Thereby is the primary function of this to attract businesses. The primary, so one of the goals of this is certainly one of the goals of this, one of the primary goals of this is to ensure that the commercial spaces in city center and having a city center that has a vibrant commercial base is possible. I think, to your question, I think there may very well be a, do we need that now when the commercial space is, you know, 5% leased up? Do we need that when the space is 40% leased up? Is there a face-in approach? What we have heard from the landlords is the folks looking at leasing the spaces, want, the the folks looking at leasing the commercial spaces want to know now what the plan for paid parking is going to be to ensure that they have enough turnover in front of their businesses over time to support their business models. So that's why we're doing it now, to try and give them some certainty that we will have a plan.
Um, sorry, can you hear me? Um, so I, I don't know, I know that in the housing market, this is the seller's markets, and anybody who wants to move into some places is in the is fighting for space. Is, for businesses, are we hard up for finding businesses that want to lease this area?
Are we hard up? I wouldn't say, that's a great question. I don't think we're necessarily hard up, but I think we are emerging, i.e. it's expensive to lease up these spaces because they're not fit up yet. It is brand-new commercial space, so to get to lease one of these spaces, you have to put down the capital to fit up the space for the use you want, and then operate your business. So there's a high bar to entry, or a high, is that the right phrase? So that they're trying to build their business models out 10 years, when we may see other properties redevelop and many more businesses move in and whatnot. So that's, that's why they're looking for some kind of predictability of what's gonna happen in the future. I think they are getting tenant interest, but it's, is it the, is it the kind of mix we want, you know, like, so this is getting way into the weeds of kind of the community development side of it, but it would be easy for the landowner who leased the entire, an entire block of commercial space to H&R One. Because they're a national tenant that has deep pockets, they want to be here, blah, blah, blah. We are pushing them very strongly to say, that is not the vision of city center we want to see. We want to see coffee shops and small businesses and restaurants and maybe some service industries, but not a big one suburban chunk of commercial spot and space. But those smaller businesses are the ones that the high bar to entry is harder for.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, is there a sense that the, the revenue, the tax base generated from those commercial spots will also be able to offset some of the costs, so it's not passed on to taxpayers?
That's a really good idea, Holly. So one of the things that's going to happen as those commercial spaces come online is we will hopefully be collecting local options tax from those spaces. So if there is, if the revenue model isn't penciling to keep, to stay within the enterprise fund, there may be other non-property tax revenues that could support that. That's a, that's an interesting way to think about it, though.
Okay, because I understand why we would want to attract small businesses, because that's part of the character we're looking for, but if the cost of that is that we're charging people for parking, then I wonder if that could be something that we could be using that money to subsidize at least our lower-income or senior residents, things like that.
Yeah.
And then I know, I know Stacy wants to talk about the bus route, because Stacy always wants to talk about the bus route. Oh, it's funny, sorry. Anyway, but I wanted to come back to the bus route, because you mentioned buses. Oh, it's funny, sorry. Anyway, but I wanted to come back to the bus route because you mentioned buses earlier and I know the bikes are going away. So for limiting the number of ways people can get downtown, then I wanted to just raise that as well.
So I think Holly's asking, Theresa, why don't you do your question first and then I will.
Yeah, um, I guess this is just kind of belonging like the theme of what you're gonna say, but um. I'm, I'm, I have a concern that, um, is this consultant that you're working with? Um, are they giving enough or equally to the needs of third things like library? Because our needs for parking are not, we're not trying to get people to turn over and spend money in the library, we're trying to stay here. So I wanna make sure that that's being given.
Oh, I mean, that's part of why we're doing these little things. Well, we can if we don't wanna grow city center. I mean, that's the, that's the challenge, right? Like, we can stay status, but we can stay right where we are, but we're gonna have vacant commercial spot, space and not see other properties redevelop. And that isn't what the community has envisioned. Um, so that's the challenge of how to operationalize what the community has envisioned while ensuring we're protecting. The assets that we have and the welcoming nature we have to our public spaces.
One more, um, you guys are gonna say, um, is. I, I would really hope that a concern for data privacy will make it into your RFP on that. Something that stuck with, especially the past one person, but.
Good point.
Yeah.
Writing that one down for sure.
Thanks, Trace. So I'm gonna, I just wanted to return to the idea of the property taxes really quickly. Because um, we use the word subsidize, um, and if we choose, we wanna subsidize our elderly who are using the senior center. That's one way to do that, but it feels like um, property tax. I mean, I don't know if you know this, people are kind of upset about that, how quickly they um, risen in the past few years. And it feels like we're being asked to set, instead of using that verification, we're being asked to subsidize businesses. Which, and. That's a hard ask, that's a big ask.
How do you feel like we're asking to subsidize businesses?
Because physicians want the property, want the parking to be leader, they want it to be paid parking. And that paid parking cost for that has to be paid, or one of the options we can say is property tax.
Yeah, I mean, uh, again, my hope is that it's not property tax. My hope is that the, the, the system supports itself. Like our water system supports itself and there's no tax dollars that go into the water system. Uh, I also think the businesses are here because the community has asked them to be here. The community has said, we wanna downtown where there are businesses and so we've built Market Street, we've zoned for that, we've adopted. Um, Tiff District, we've taken out a lot of bond votes, so we as a community have invited the businesses to participate here. And so we need, now need to support them to be here, or we can have first floor commercial that is, is vacant. And I, and I do wanna say like, I know that there's a huge affordability concern in this community. We built our full budget around that concern. I don't wanna minimize, I don't, I don't wanna give the impression that I am minimizing. The affordability concerns in this community, cuz that is certainly not how I spend most of my days.
And my, yeah, so my bus route thing, I know Holly, everybody laughs because Stacy always says something about the bus route. But we really have areas like the Shelburne Road piece. And I will admit, I haven't read up lately on the potential for Green Mountain Transit to do a bus route. From Shaw's type area on Shelburne Road to get people across the interstate here to Market Street. So.
Shelburne Road over here.
Over here, through the interstate, because I feel like that is a true issue for people. They can't get to the library because they have to go all the way downtown to come uptown. And I know that there have been discussions about that and that does potentially change some of the parking issues. Because if you're able to get on a bus and use that instead of crossing the interstate with your car. Maybe that would lessen some of that load, but it also brings more accessibility. Are there any new updates? And you can tell me just to read things that I haven't read yet.
Oh, well, go listen to every GMT board meeting. No, I did not expect you to do that. Um, so we, as I think you specifically, but I hope everyone knows, um, we. So GMT is facing a fiscal cliff, as I think we all know, um, are reducing services. Um, we are very lucky in South Burlington that they, while they are changing services. In aggregate, they are not reducing services in our community and they have realigned. Bus lines to come down Market Street, which has been a goal of ours forever. That has been decided. The, we did use the same data-driven approach where we uh, GIS mapped all of our current bus routes. Our school population data, our current permit data to know like where the housing is now. And where we think the housing is gonna be in ten years. Um, and use that to make a request to GMT to both do the Market Street connection and to do the roots, the Shelburne Road connection. Um, we, this Shelburne Road connection was not part of the, they, they weren't adding any new services. While they were reducing services in other communities. So the request still stands, it's with the GMT board. Um, but until I think their financing significantly shifts or the board's orientation to. Um, growing out of the problem rather than cutting out of the problem shifts, I don't think we will see that route. But we will continue to pound the table. We're also, you know, uh, just to be transparent and from a financial perspective. We also are adding sixty thousand dollars to the FY twenty-six budget to support Green Mountain Transit. So they will do some of these things. Um, we pay seven hundred thousand dollars a year to fund Green Mountain Transit. We hope the federal government will continue to fund public transport assistance.
Does anybody have additional questions for Jesse? I know that it's hard to come and. Do an overview with things you don't know everything about, but it's really nice to be able to have you here and kind of talk about it so we can hear what's happening.
And, and these ideas are really helpful for me, so we can address them as we come up with the plan. So if you have other concerns or ideas, or you see something working, or you read an article about an urban library that's doing this really well. Please feel free to share like these, we're all in it together, we're just trying to get to the best place we can.
I was just gonna ask about timeline, cuz you mentioned listening to such. Was it, um, when do you anticipate getting recommendations from um, consulting?
So we hope to have the consultant, it's a, what's called a UPW, oh, that doesn't matter. We hope to have the report back by the end of the summer.
And a little side question, cuz that's when I got here and then Holly's gonna ask the question. So I parked, I think, in a green spot, but then I got here and I read a sign that said I could be towed. Could I really be towed?
Um, so in theory, you could, because you are on private property that's not managed by the city, right? So the city leases forty parking spots from the Poon property, we pay for those spots, the ones that are green. So anyone can park there for free, uh, cuz we pay for it. Um, property tax. We do that through property tax, just to be totally transparent, we don't have parking fund. Um. Uh, I have never seen the Poons, actually, the only time I've seen the Poons tow somebody is when somebody's car was dead. So I don't think you will be towed, but.
I haven't seen that sign, so I. Has the fan, I just haven't seen it, so I just looked. Holly has one last, do you have one last thought?
Yes, I had one more thing, um, I missed part of the school discussion, um, cuz I was dealing with children. Uh, I know the school budget is a contentious issue and maybe taxpayers don't really care which bucket things come from. But would any uh, adjustments that had to be made in terms of maintenance or gates or whatever at the school be part of the school budget? Or would that be part of a different budget? I just know that our school budgets are not very good at getting approved and adding more things that are not really the school's fault. But are necessary to keep the children safe. Um, I wondered if maybe that was something that needed to come from a different fund.
She's adding it to her list, Holly. Cuz they don't know the answer yet.
Well, we don't know what the school wants us to do yet, so. You know, if the school's ask is to build a parking structure on their property, that's one thing. If the school's ask is to put up a gate, that's another thing. If the school's ask is that, so it's, you know, it's. Too many unknowns at this point, you know the answer.
I'm just thinking of, um, my other kid goes to the YMCA and they have a free parking lot in the middle of a non-free zone and they had to hire security people. To keep people moving through there and that cost then went to the, the users of the YMCA, um. And so I was just thinking about that.
A great example, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we always appreciate having you here. We can be helpful in bringing ideas and being advocates to what's happening. And letting people know and amplifying, these are the conversations that are happening. Some people recognize they're important conversations, we want businesses here. So that um, some of us can get our coffee when we go to the library and amazing.
I am going home fairly shortly.
Thank you, thanks, honey.
If anyone knows any awesome please, Jason.
Take some chocolate, Jesse.
Yes, Jesse, take some chocolate. Okay, so we're gonna go right to Jennifer's director's report, if anybody has thoughts. They did send that with the agenda and there is a question on there.
Does he have another question?
Oh, yeah. What readers, what is readers' advice? Nothing like using jargon. What is readers' advisory? That is our, um. That is a, a key piece of working in a public library. Because it's um, when somebody comes and says, I really like this book by Danielle Steele. I want something else like it and we help to figure out, is it the historical fiction piece they like? Is it the body romance that they like? Is it that they like books set in Oklahoma? So that's the, that's, that's that process. Thank you. Did you wanna do the item? Should people who? Yes, Stacy was waiting for other, other questions first, but I'm ready for that.
I think you're good.
So uh, Sue Meyer, the circulation librarian, and I uh, had talked about that. We, we talked about it briefly in governance and I took it.
Good question first.
The question is, that's what I'm talking about?
Yes.
The question, oh, for the computer, yeah, yeah. The question is.
What, what is the question? The question, should people who work in town but live elsewhere be permitted to get library cards here in South Burlington?
Thank you. So, people work here but don't live here, should they get a library card? So um, Sue and I both haven't, so the conversation started in the governance committee. I said I was gonna go back and talk to Sue about it. Um, and so she and I are both um. Supportive of this in theory. Um, we will still, in any situation, ask people first to go to their home library, get a card. And come back and be a home card patron, that's always our first choice. Um, however, this would, this would mean that if somebody says, you know, I work in town. And I, I'm never near the library in Richmond and I can't, I just, uh, it's too, it's just too much for me. That we would give them a card, it would not, um, Sue's recommendation is that we give, that if we proceed in this direction. That it would be a card like a home card in that the person would not, it wouldn't be a full-service card. So if you bring your home card from Richmond or anywhere else, um, you don't use our living. You don't use our canopy, you don't use our consumer reports. Uh, or our mango languages, those are all um, restricted by library card number. But you do get to check out books and materials. So um, so that, I just thought that perhaps it would be an interesting question to pose to the group. Uh, obviously, it's not something we would be voting on in this moment because it wasn't warned that way. But I wanted to see if you all had thoughts.
Is the plan to have it be free?
Yeah, it would be free.
Do you have an estimate on how people would actually, might actually make use this?
Right now, we have, um, right now, we have that option available. To city employees and school employees. Um, left over from when we were in the schools and we just didn't change it cuz it seemed crazy to me to change it. Um, but. No, we don't know, Holly. Uh, the difference would be like, oh, you typed it, sorry, I thought that was Stacy's type. If we make this decision, then we'll also have to decide how much are we gonna be asking the communications team? To uh, get the word out about it, right? So we can have it as a policy and it doesn't come up unless somebody comes in and it's just kind of, yeah, it's on the website. But it's not a, you know, we're not advocating for it, or we can do it and then we can. Do some, some kind of a big campaign. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to do a campaign anyway. About home card, you know, kind of in a way that doesn't use the home card as the, the explanation. Cuz that's also jargon that people don't necessarily understand. Yeah, so I don't know, I, I don't, and I'm not sure how many uh, school system or city employees use it. Uh, probably not that many, most of them who use it came from, come from Burlington. And he, you know, in the past, had to have a special card because we didn't, they weren't home card. So we've cut, there'll be a lot fewer Burlington residents because, um. Yeah, because now they are home card.
I'm sorry, and with like library things, audio books, like would all of that be on the table? Okay.
Any, right now, temporary cards, home cards, all those things could be checked out.
Are there any, is the name of this up yet?
I, I, we don't have, it's all, we don't have a study, uh, it, it's more anecdotal. So I guess the, the downside is, um, we did this at the mall. We, and we did go around and put out flyers and very few people took us up on it. But you know, if you're working at Foot Locker and you come and get a card here and you check out a whole pile of stuff. And then you leave Foot Locker because there's a lot of turnover. Are you gonna, you know, are you gonna make the effort to bring the stuff back? I think that that's really the, the, that's the primary downside that I see. I don't think that our turnover of materials is so high that if we add. You know, two hundred more people, suddenly there's not gonna be anything on the shelves, right? I don't think that's an issue. So I don't, I don't think there's anything concrete like that.
And Holly had the two thoughts of. Card should be an option rather than advertised, so the worker card. All in on advertising and explaining the home card. I don't think it's a good use of com squad energy to advertise something you prefer not, people not to.
I guess that's up to the chair, usually not chair.
Go ahead.
No, I just was just gonna, I think it seems like a, not such a bad thing to do, but just leave it on the QT. You know, for people to ask you about, cuz I'd be worried more about that thing about like. So-and-so leaves that employment and doesn't come around here, not so much that they aren't gonna return the books. But then you just have like a card in your system that's useless cuz the person's never coming back. So you have that kind of, how do we clean up the rolls of who's really.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Card member, you know.
Yeah, so, so, so be assured that there is a system in place. I don't know if it's twelve months now or more, where we do purge cards that haven't been. I don't know if it's twelve months now or more, where we do purge cards that haven't been used. But it's a good point, for sure, we know.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So that's, that was that.
Any other thoughts?
Just a very busy life. So, yeah, so what we'll do is, uh, I'll take it to governance and governance can make a motion and.
Thank you. Um, there is no friends of the library report because, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you that before, um. But you didn't see Sue, so I was hoping you would assume that. And then let's do our foundation update.
Excellent, and we're joined by the president of the foundation, so in this speak, we're gonna ask. Get it right. Um, so, uh, we are above plan in, in interests and expenses. Everything's in line with the budget. So for the first six month of the fiscal year, the income has been sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. And the budgeted income is twice that, so we're on track. Um, and that includes officially fourteen, around fourteen thousand dollars in donations. But as of the, the date of the meeting, which was a little bit after, um, oh, wow. Sure, great, that's, that's awesome. Excellent. And at this point, we had donations, there were a hundred and forty-nine gifts from a hundred and thirty-eight donors. This point.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um, and the board gave, uh, ten thousand, two hundred dollars to the gift account for the second half of the fiscal year. Uh, put some money, twenty-five thousand into another six-month CD. Um, we talked about library needs and, um, furnishings for the adult workroom and funds to redo the hangout, which is downstairs for upper elementary and middle school kids. Um, but, um, but there, but the library's looking for um, a new employee to go and kind of bond with the kids and find out from them what they would want in this area before we start, um, figuring out, raising money for that. Um, and the foundation is planning a spring appeal for people who have not given this fiscal year and a donor thank you event at the library, perhaps with some kind of activity. Um, and the date is to be determined. It's in process of being determined right now.
Having a conjunction at the library. Jennifer is a must-attendee and. Yeah, I wanna set the tone tonight.
Fantastic, fantastic.
No, please don't.
We're taking them all to Speltacada too, so. Yeah, uh, and the board has, uh, has two openings for members, both terms ending in June of twenty twenty-six. And this group, um, needs to approve additions to the, um, the board of the Library Foundation. So I'm gonna make a motion for the Board of Trustees here to approve adding Nancy Simpson as a member of the Board of the South Burlington Library Foundation with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. She agreed for a short term. So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Well, to my extent in twenty.
Might extend, but this is, but we're gonna start with this. This is for sure.
Discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Amazing, that passes. Thank you very much. You didn't raise your.
Send Nancy an email tonight. She'll be super excited.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So next up would be any other Ted is away doing something fun. So I think we're all set with finance, report, governance. We're all good with governance. And comm squad, we're all good with comm squad. There was, I did send you the link to, uh, what's going on.
Do you want that link as part of your minute notes?
Um, no, no, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. No, you're good. So.
I'm just gonna make a note that you have an agenda, you have a schedule.
That would be great. Amazing. So if, is there any other business that we should discuss?
Well, it's not to discuss, I just wanna say I thought that, then I, am I losing my mind? That since the last time we met, we had a little, uh, F-Card. The neighborhood thing where you welcome people.
Was that since the last meeting?
Yeah, was that? I think so.
Was that in between? So that would be, well, a report from the comm squad.
Sorry, I couldn't hear Rebecca. What'd you say, Rebecca?
Well, I was just, uh, trying to remind myself that in fact, there was a, you know.
Oh, yeah, that occurred since last meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was before that. I'm sorry, I didn't add it in my.
No, it's all right. Rebecca, would you like to report on that while I?
It's, uh, there were, there was a lot going on in the building on that particular day, which I think actually was, was a, was a good learning.
Yeah.
Uh, and helpful in that, uh, there was a lot of traffic going into the library and people did stop. Uh, and that's great. And, um, thank you to the foundation for, um, helping fund, or it is, uh, fund that.
I gotta say, we made a mean hot chocolate?
Yes. Really, it really was.
It was.
Two hours. And I think it is something that could be, uh, replicated because, uh, a lot of goodwill, you know. Parents were, they were really complimentary about, this was great. And it was kind of.
And we had fourteen people who, who actually did the, they.
And more that came but didn't finish the bingo. I was able to talk to a handful of people, some new residents and then some kids that were really excited to be here. Um, some parents with children, high school children that were really happy to see what was happening. So that was nice. And someone who had never heard of, um, a couple of things going on in the library. So it was nice to be able to point out those areas.
I think it was good. Uh, you know, I think it, it we, it was, it was on a very short schedule, the planning of it. But we did at least make, uh, contact with the, the apartments. We had two, I've talked, I've talked to two, the two different people who are the right people to get the flyers on level and we'll sort of send them out. So we at least have that established because that's changed since the last time you all did it in September.
Are these buildings open now, the, the new ones that are across the street or is it just the ones outside?
I think there's, I don't think that.
Yeah, just the same. Amazing.
There's a chat, she wants to.
Oh, sorry.
Just, they have a question.
One more question for governance. Okay, Holly.
Uh, yeah, so you know, I take photos for comm squad and also for the, um, foundation. Um, and somebody pointed out that we don't have a lot of, sorry, do you already know about this? Am I repeating something?
No, no.
No, do it.
Oh, somebody pointed out that we don't have a lot of pictures of middle schoolers and high schoolers. So I brought my camera. I was all prepared to take their pictures, but their parents aren't there. And so I was wondering if governance could make some sort of policy on where we draw the line in terms of, uh, age for parent signing and how that relates to me taking pictures of middle schoolers and teenagers who are there without adults.
Okay, so the short answer is, I think that's definitely a conversation we need to have in governance. Um, because there, my feeling is it's very tricky. I think, um, uh, that's a conversation we need to, I don't know, how deep do you wanna go into this?
As you can see, we have actually had some of this conversation, whether we've made the last.
Conversation because, um, I think that it's really hard for a middle schooler or a high schooler, you want to say no. Um, which is one of the reasons why, you know, we should have, have, um, the parent involved. And we also don't know, we don't necessarily know the situation of that family or those parents and domestic, um, issues and issues of, um, custodianship and things like that. So there are lots of really valid reasons that parents have that they don't want their parent, their children to be on the public website. Um, so those are my first thoughts, but again, we haven't had, we haven't revisited it with governance, governance.
It's on the agenda, though.
But it's on the agenda. If you wanna.
I brought it to.
We'd like to see you, Holly.
That is good.
Well, I, I also would like to say, Holly, that, um, absolutely, if you go to the hangout and there are kids there, they are, they will be unaccompanied and that's not your population. But depending on when you're here, you might have better luck going upstairs after school or on Saturdays when families are traveling together. And then you can take, usually what I do is I unobtrusively take a picture uh, with the parents or without the parents, and then I take it over to the parent and I say, I've got this picture. Do you mind? So that we don't get them looking all, uh, self-conscious and all that stuff. But, um, so that might be a different way to do it if you happen to be here with your camera, is kind of looking for family groups. You might have more luck and/or, um, you know, maybe I could try to do more of that if you wanted me to.
I mean, I wonder too, how much, if it's valuable to do pictures that aren't, but with kids in it but aren't identifiable?
I. Yeah, we can do back of the head stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do back of the head.
Yeah, you, I think, I think there are other ways to do this. I.
Yeah, I, I will volunteer my two children. Like a sixth grader and a second grader, they could be, uh, they, they'll do it for candy.
It's a bribery.
But I mean, uh, we can sort of spend it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially, especially Holly, if you're thinking about we need certain kinds of shop, that's better for a beginning collective group of some students that we.
That we know are.
That we know are first, uh, we could pose them.
Thank you. So we have some good things to talk about at governance next meeting.
Yeah. The other thing that, um, the other time that it might be good to come, Holly, would be for, um, for the middle school cooking. Because that's, the other day, we had eleven kids who were cooking and playing. No. Twister. You know, collectively, you couldn't take a whole group, but if you, but several of them are picked up by parents and so we could get permission then. Although your plan is good. Just depends on what you're aiming for.
I'd also like to just say that it was very enjoyable to be in the puzzle contest. Fabulous event. Our team did not, we came in third this time, this year, but we had a good time. It was really.
Well, it's taking, uh, it's taking the libraries by storm.
Isn't it?
And, uh, so suddenly there, some libraries are collecting them and then trying to share them with each other for puzzle contests. Now, of course, the issue is if they happen to be in a contest and they don't have all the pieces, the puzzlers will not be happy. So there's definitely an advantage to brand new ones.
Sorry, that was a side conversation. Sorry, Holly.
Oh, skates, I see, I see. Yeah, yeah.
Amazing. Great. Thank you so much. No other business? If that is, we're all set. We are adjourning at six thirty-two. Holly, thanks for coming over during hockey practice. See you soon.